Good evening. I'd like to call the Region 15 Board of Education to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome you on this cold night and thank you for coming. Student representatives, please.
So, it's good to be back. We haven't had a Monday in awhile because of all the snow, but here we are. And luckily enough, the extracurricular activities and events PomPRAG students have been planning have not stopped, so they haven't cared about the weather. You know, they're still going strong. And so, this Thursday evening, February 26th, at 7:00, there will be the PomPRAG Talent Show in the auditorium. And tickets are $5 and are available at the door. So, it's a really great thing to go to, to really support the talent of PomPRAG students. There's going to be singers, probably dancers, people playing instruments, all sorts of well-rounded students just showing their talent. And the senior semi-formal has been moved to this Saturday, February 28th, and the time has changed to 6:00 to 10:00. The location has remained the same. It's at the Candlewood Inn in Brookfield, and that was moved due to the weather last Saturday, which was a very good decision. And there will be a Grad Night fundraiser this Wednesday, February 25th, at Senior Pancho's. So, if you're really craving that Mexican food, go down there and really support our seniors, and that'll really help out a lot. And PomPRAG has recognized two scholar athletes, Joanna Rizza and Frank Sinapi. And they are recognized for their academic and athletic careers because they've been very exemplary in both cases. They have very high personal standards, and their achievements are a model to others' PomPRAG students. And they possess high levels of integrity, self-discipline, and courage, which is something really everyone wants, so they're very good role models. And lastly, the ski trip, the PomPRAG ski trip, has been scheduled for this weekend, and students will be going to Smuggler's Notch in Vermont. And so, that should be very fun despite the cold. Hopefully, it will warm up this weekend for them. Thank you.
Speaking of skiing, there is great news for the ski team. It's the first time in the ski team's history that three boys and three girls have placed for the shootout. The shootout was today at Mount Sutherlandton, and if they place within the top 30 of more than 60 skiers from various schools, they will move on to the slalom finals. And a recent report from the ski team says that Haley Latta, Lauren Carver, Matt Kanter, and Lilly Moleskowicz have, are moving on to the race tomorrow. So, that's very good. It's the first time in PomPRAG's history that that has happened. Both the boys and girls track teams continue to do very well, with the boys' track team placing fifth overall and the girls placing second overall. Michaela Meyer placed third overall in the 600-meter race. The girls placed fifth in the 4x800-meter relay race consisting of Allison Meyer, Michaela Meyer, Lindsay Scott, and Sarah Terrassio. On Friday, this Friday, these four girls will be competing at the New England Indoor Track and Field Championship in Boston. Another history for PomPRAG is the wrestling team who placed sixth in the Class L Championship, and that's the highest that they have ever placed in the history of the wrestling team at PomPRAG, so congrats to them. Last Friday, the boys had their senior night here at PomPRAG, and tomorrow they have an away game at Brookfield High School at 7:00. The girls have a record of 17-4 with an outstanding 11-game winning streak, with most of their games being won by 10 or more points. They will play again tomorrow at the semifinals in New Fairfield at, or against New Fairfield at Newtown High School at 7:30, so hopefully, they can win again and go on to the championships. For both the boys and girls basketball teams, we will find out more later this month with the semifinals and the championships. Hopefully, we do well as we usually do.
Thank you. Any questions of the student representatives?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to thank you both, Kelly and Liam, for your comments. At the last regularly scheduled board meeting, you spoke very passionately and respectfully about a subject that you felt very strongly about, and I appreciated your input. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there being none, thank you. Okay, moving on, presentations. Mrs. Botzford?
Good evening, and thank you very much for coming this evening. I am pleased to present to the board my recommended budget for 2015-16. As a school district, we focus our work on our mission. We are dedicated to children and their learning, and we are committed to excellence. This budget is our investment in the future of our children. It represents decision-making made in the best interest of our students and balanced by responsible spending. We owe our students the best education that we can afford. How many of you remember classrooms like this one? Am I the only one in here? Oh, okay. Well, yes, I certainly do. I remember class, these kinds of classrooms worked for those of us who went to school a while ago. For me, it was, well, let's just say it was a good number of years. Children sat in rows, they faced the teacher, and they tried to absorb what the teacher taught them. Today's students are growing up in a different world than the one in which we grew up. It is an increasingly complex and global world, and it requires students to make sense of the world around them, to ask and answer complex questions, and to work with each other to investigate and evaluate different approaches and different perspectives. Technology is a critical component in our children's education if they are to be leaders in the world into which they are growing. By the time many of our kindergarteners enter the workforce, they will have jobs that may not even yet exist. So, if we don't know yet what kinds of jobs our youngest learners will have when they enter the world of work, we then must prepare them for a future of thinking, of sense-making, of evaluating. A world in which technologies will play an increasingly important role, and a world in which technologies will actually change the nature of work. We need creative and resourceful thinkers who can evaluate multiple perspectives and who can adapt to the rapidly changing world around them. This is the education that we seek to bring to our children, the best for their future, not for what serves us in our present, because our present will be their past. There are four significant areas of investment that I'm asking the board to make in this budget. They're listed here, and we will look at each of these as we continue. So, I spoke before about the importance of technology to adequately prepare our students for the world that they are in and the world into which they will grow. It is part of our responsibility as those charged with educating our citizens of tomorrow. And one of the issues we face is that, in the past, we have not always kept up with a responsible spending plan for technology. As a result, we have some catching up to do. So, I'm going to ask you to take a moment to hear from some international experts on the future of education. Sir Ken Robinson, Tom Friedman, and Tony Wagner.
And part of the problem is, the current systems of education are rooted in the old industrial economy of the 19th century. They're not rooted in the new economies of the 21st century. It's why so many employers are complaining that the kids who do well in education still don't have the right skills or attitudes or dispositions to fill the vacancies they actually have.
So, what is everyone looking for? They're looking for people who can do critical thinking and problem-solving, dot, 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 in order to get an interview. Critical thinking and problem-solving are really table stakes today. They assume, you forgot that. What everyone's really looking for are people who can only do their job, but invent, reinvent, and re-engineer their job while they're doing it. The world is in a very different place with a knowledge and innovation-driven economy. Knowledge is a given. Employers over and over say, "Well, I'll teach them the content they need, but what I can't teach them is how to think, how to communicate, how to collaborate, how to initiate."
So, those were some well-known international experts. Now, I would like you to please hear from some of our own experts. The experts from whom you will hear in this video are two of our middle school teachers, Linda Latimer and Trish DiMuzio, and they will show us examples of how technology is helping us in Region 15 today to accomplish the kinds of learning that are necessary for today's students.
In connection with the text, we go beyond the text. We were looking at some video links today, so all of their work where they might be answering questions always has a video link or two, just like a four- or five-minute clip. Today, it was on what influences climate. So, they can, we do it in class, we discuss it in class, but tonight, as they're doing their homework, you know, I can say to them, "You can go back and, you know, view that link and jot down any additional questions you might have," and they do it.
I think we are starting to blow out the sides of the classroom. I really, we-
What does that mean?
It means distance learning, for one thing. It means that the hours in school have now become any hour. They, this information is available to them when they need it, when we are not there necessarily.
Students absent, it tends not to be an issue because everything is available digitally.
They are able to collaborate on a live document so that each person adds to the doc, is able to read what others have contributed to that doc, and then respond, so that they are seeing, there is a certain simultaneity about this experience. We saw a surge of participation engagement, especially by the reluctant learner, by the student who might be much less inclined to join in a verbal discussion, who will jump onto a doc and be an active participation, an active participant in that discussion. This is their world, and we have joined it. They are very comfortable with this means of electronic communication, and we are using it for instruction and communication and collaboration. I would like to start some collaboration with other schools-
Outside of RMS, other countries.
Video visits with authors. I think the possibilities are so-
Oh, possibilities are huge.
That is a beautiful view of the high-quality, forward-thinking instruction that is going on in our classrooms. We have a capacity trust, so to speak, in our students and our teachers. But the fact is that our technology is not as available to us as we need it to be. And the kind of scenarios that you saw in the video cannot happen as often as we would like and as often as our students need because our equipment is aging. So, let's take a look at our technology needs for next year. Our wired and wireless infrastructure, the backbone of our system, was originally installed in the 1990s and had its last major upgrade in 2007. It is now insufficient to meet current and future needs. The upgrade in this budget is planned to accommodate current and future needs. We currently have smart boards and projectors in all regular classrooms at our elementary and middle schools. We have been putting them in a little at a time since 2006. And a special thank you to our PTOs for having donated the great majority of those smart boards. And now, a good number of them now need to be replaced because they can no longer be repaired. And you also see in the slide that we need one for our pre-K classroom at Long Meadow. We also need to complete the outfitting of all instructional spaces at PHS with computer projection equipment. Some of that work was done last year. What is allocated in this budget would complete the rest of our instructional spaces: special education classrooms, the auditorium, this room, our AP room, the library, the music lab, career center, language lab. There is a total of 21 projectors. The cost for each ranges from $1,000 to $3,000, depending upon the configuration of the room. What you see in the slide is the average cost for each at $1,476. We also need additional computers and software for the Digital Learning Academy at PHS, and that is an enrollment-driven requirement, and we will need five new computers and software because we will have five additional students next year. This slide continues from the previous slide, but it is about replacing computers that are beyond their useful life. Unit costs are for refurbished equipment. Our experience has shown us that the average usable life for desktops is about six years, and the average usable life for laptops is about five years. So, here you see the total number of desktops currently in our schools that are seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 years old, and the total number of laptops we have that are six, seven, and eight years old. And you can see by virtue of the age of these computers that we keep them as long as we can. But as they age, they become unreliable, and when they're unreliable, they don't get Just to point out how important these replacements are to make, point of information, when all these replacements are made, we will still begin the 15-16 school year with 430 desktops that are six years old and 290 laptops that are five years old. And I share that information because it is important for us to recognize that it will be important to make a continuing investment in technology in future budgets. It's important when looking at this slide to remember that what's here is updating what we currently have. Other than the additional computers required for the Digital Academy, which was on the previous slide, there are no additional computers in this budget. This is updating the old equipment that we currently have. And to find, to pay for this, we will enter into a multi-year lease for this equipment at a budgeted cost of $60,000. Math instruction at the elementary level currently uses open-source materials that are selected by teachers to align with the district curriculum and state standards. The process of adopting a text had been delayed because there just weren't enough high-quality textbooks available. Now, though, there are options worthy of consideration as textbooks, and these textbooks will be evaluated by staff for their ability to serve as a common resource for teachers as they deliver our math program. The plan is to purchase and use new textbooks for next year in grades K to 3, and to expand the use of math textbooks to additional grades in the following year. Last year, when cuts were made to the budget, we had made significant cuts to library books, both those housed in our school libraries and those housed in our classrooms for reading instruction. Libraries, like technology, require ongoing updating to keep collections fresh, relevant, and engaging for students. Additionally, we are now requiring more reading of our students, both fiction and nonfiction. And the recent addition of full-day kindergarten has had the positive effect for which we had hoped. Our kindergarten students are making greater strides in their reading, and that means we have to provide books at higher levels for them. The turf field at PHS is 11 years old. The life expectancy of a turf field is 10 years, so ours has outlived its life expectancy by one year. We are required to have a density test performed annually for safety reasons. This test measures how soft or how hard the surface is, and the most current test is acceptable, but the field is approaching the point at which it will no longer be acceptable. It's time to replace it, and we will do that next year. We will do it with multi-year financing, using capital reserve in 15-16. The Finance Committee of the Board has prudently built up our capital reserve fund over the past three years in anticipation of this need, and as a result, there will be no financial impact on the 15-16 budget, and the impact on subsequent budgets will be softened. Here you see new textbooks that we will be providing for specific courses next year at PHS. AP Economics will be offered for the first time next year, and Personal Finance and AP Calculus continue to be offered, but as a result of standards, new standards for student learning, we need new textbooks for those courses as well. It takes funding to educate our children, and we need to consider our funding in its historical perspective. Every year, as we all know, costs go up. For two years, we were able to bring to our voters two consecutive budgets of 0%. We accomplished that by applying rigorous cost-cutting measures that allowed us to absorb those annual increases. We continue to apply those rigorous cost-cutting measures, and as a result, there is no longer anywhere to absorb annual increases. This evening, I bring you a very responsible budget increase of 2.48%. So, how did we get here? Mr. McLivity, Mrs. Lyman, and I have met personally with each administrator, and we have reviewed budget requests relative to alignment with district mission. Every year, we also review student enrollment, not just by total number of students, but by grade and school, to ensure that students have the services that they need and that we also honor our responsibility to our taxpayers. This year, we started the practice of reviewing major cost centers at the Board Finance and Facilities meetings during the year, and those meetings were reported on at meetings of the full board by Mr. Babarik. Some primary budget drivers for consideration as we look at this year's, next year's budget, recommended budget. A primary budget driver certainly remains the impact of the two years of 0% budget increases in '11, '12, and '12, '13, which, as I said before, were accomplished by having taken rigorous cost-cutting measures, allowing us to absorb our increases in fixed costs during those two years. Of course, we continue those rigorous cost-cutting measures, but because fixed costs like salaries, tuition, and energy go up every year, we can no longer absorb them. In particular, this year, we are facing increased costs in medical insurance and in funding our pension. And while we do receive state and federal grants, we can only plan on them coming in at lower amounts. Every year, we review class size to ensure that it is most reasonable and to maximize learning, and it's also responsible in terms of spending. The items listed on this slide as secondary budget drivers are those improvements that I discussed earlier. Costs were listed on previous slides, and I will summarize them again in a subsequent slide. Here are some examples of the rigorous cost-savings measures that we have applied in previous years and that continue to be applied. We are self-insured as of last school year, allowing us to bypass the management fee and save over $1 million each year. We purchase energy through consortia, and we participate in an energy conservation program. We have converted from oil to natural gas at PHS. All of these have resulted in significant savings that continue into this budget. This is a retrospective look at enrollment and staffing. We hit our highest October 1 enrollment in 2007 at 4,572 students. So, you can see by this chart that we have been responding to enrollment changes in a responsible manner, adding instructional services every year in the past five years, and reducing staff when possible. We're sometimes asked, for example, if we lose 131 students, why can't we cut a certain number of teachers? The answer is that those students are not all in the same place. They're not in the same grade, they're not in the same school. Rather, they're spread out among the schools and grades. So, it takes some time for the enrollment decrease to aggregate enough so that we can make staffing reductions. And looking at the year-to-year enrollment relative to class size is what we do every year when we put together the budget. For next year, in 2015-16, we will be able to reduce three teaching positions. We are also sometimes asked why we haven't closed a school. Since our highest enrollment of 4,572 students in '07-'08, we have lost 691 students. It might sound like enough to close a school, but once again, the students are not all in the same school, at the same level, or in the same grade. So, currently, we are not in a position to close a school. Making a decision like that is one that must be entered into very carefully as part of a long-term enrollment and space utilization plan, and under the guidance of professional consultants in these areas. Region 15 did that just two years ago, and the decision of the board, after examining all the variables, was to modify the school boundary lines. We called it redistricting. That's what's in effect now. The advisability of revisiting that study is something that will be reviewed carefully over the next few years, taking into account the perspectives of stakeholders, the potential for increased costs due to necessary modifications of physical plant, and increased transportation costs, the impact on students and families, and the bottom-line financial impact to the district, both short-term and long-term. The budget that I present this evening is framed on next year's needs. Long-term needs will be addressed through a long-term process. Long-term needs will be addressed through a long-term process. One way to assess spending is to look at comparative data among districts. And to do that, CSDE, the State Department of Education, calculates comparative spending in several ways. The most recent data available are from 201314. This particular set of data, net current expenditures per pupil, establishes an equitable database with which to compare costs among local and regional boards of education. These are objective data points that are helpful as an indicator of comparative spending. DREG-B is our state-designated group of socio-economically similar districts. Whether we look statewide or within our socioeconomic group, Region 15 was among the lower-spending This budget proposes no cuts to any services or programs for students. Particular examples of exemplary services, programs, and practices that we will continue to provide for our students are listed here. And in addition to maintaining those exemplary programs and practices, this budget provides for the improvements listed here. These I have already discussed. On this slide, you see in one place the financial impact of the improvements that I am presenting This starts the overview of the total budget. Total budget dollar amount is listed here on this slide. The graphic shows the proportional distribution of the total dollar amount by what we call object codes: salaries, insurances, transportation, and so on. It's significant to note that the only object in the budget that is discretionary is the instructional object, and that is only 2.56% of the entire budget. All the other objects are driven by contractual or other obligated costs. So we'll take the objects one at a time for an overview. This slide shows the increase in salaries from the 1415 budget to the 1516 budget. This dollar increase represents an increase of .99 of 1% over the total 1415 budget. So just to understand how the calculations are done, when we go through each object code, the percent increases over the 14, over the total 1415 budget that will be given on each slide will add up to the total budget increase of 2.48%. Salaries are the largest part of any district budget. The increases over last year are contractually obligated to salaries and require additional contributions to Social Security, Medicare, and to funding our pension obligations for the future. This also includes a new contractual provision, allowing our special education aides increased time to collaborate with regular and special education teachers regarding content instruction. Insurance covers property insurance, liability insurance, and medical benefits. We do have increases in each, and these dollar increases include offsets from savings realized by being self-insured. We have an increase in our transportation costs this year for both in-district transportation The instruction budget includes instructional supplies, and the bulk of the increase here is due to a commitment to technology enhancements that are necessary, and that I discussed earlier: upgrading the infrastructure, or backbone, and providing projectors and smartboards as needed. This area of the budget also includes annual subscriptions to our network management and database programs, our website, Internet content filters, School Messenger, Power School, our online library system, and so on. Rentals, leases, and purchase services. There is a lease-purchase agreement in the first bullet of the slide. That lease-purchase agreement is now in the third year of a four-year obligation. In the second bullet, that lease-purchase agreement is the multi-year funding that we discussed earlier, and that would replace desktops that are currently seven, eight, nine, 10, or 11 years old, and laptops that are currently six, seven, and eight years old. And we also have additional costs in required special education therapies like occupational In facilities, we do have an increase in electricity costs. This area of the budget includes maintenance and snow removal, and it is offset by cost savings from consortia purchasing and energy conservation. We are required to pay tuition for our students who go to vocational or magnet schools or to special education schools. We do budget this line based on a student-by-student analysis to determine what funding is necessary. And in debt service, we do see a decrease. Debt service is a repayment of our obligated debt to pay off bonds that were floated to fund construction projects, the most recent being the addition of the new PHS main gym. This table shows a comparison of the proportional share of the region's budget that will be the fiscal responsibility of each town. The proportional share is based on the proportion of students that Region 15 educates from each town, and by law, this calculation is based on enrollment on October 1 of the previous year. You see that Middlebury's proportional share is increasing by about 1/4 of 1%, and Southbury's share is decreasing by that same amount. Here is the detail that identifies where the budget increases are going, for a total increase in the column on the right of 2.48%. You will see that the largest increase after salaries is in instruction, reflecting this budget's commitment to upgrading technology and providing new textbooks. Budget summary includes the upgrading of technology infrastructure, replacement of hardware that's outlived its useful life, math textbooks for grades K to 3, restores the library books K to 12, replaces the turf field, includes new texts at the high school, we continue efficiencies and initiatives from prior years, we include savings from three enrollment-driven teaching position reductions, and this budget funds our increased Here is the calendar of next steps in the budget process. All of the meetings listed here are open to the public, and time will be allotted for public comment, so please come. Mark your calendars. Referendum Wednesday, May 6. And I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. I know we have the budget workshops coming up, but are there any quick questions that the Board needs clarified at this time? Okay. Thank you, Regina. That was a very nice presentation. Okay, we'll move on. On the agenda, approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 29 special meeting, please?
Approval of the minutes of the January 29, 2015 special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, unanimous. Okay, a motion for the February 5 special meeting, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. The February 11 executive session, please. A motion?
Motion for the February 11, 2015 executive session.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Information and proposals, Board Committee reports, Finance and Facilities Committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On February 5, we held our technology workshop. We reviewed the condition of existing laptops and desktop computers. There appears to be 1,700 wireless and 1,200 hardwired units. The computers were categorized by years in service. The range of age was from one year to 11 years in operation. More effort is required to determine the usefulness of each age group of computers. There is a need to replace those units which are recognized as non-functional. More analysis is required to reach that decision. Next, the software and hardware backbone was discussed. There are approximately 200 access points which will allow Internet access to various devices at varying speeds. Current technology could reduce the access points to approximately 150 points with higher speed and greater school coverage. Discussion pointed out that the backbone must be updated before any thought of replacing computers could be undertaken. The estimated cost to update the backbone is approximately $234,000, although we have found a grant and applied for a state grant which could amount to an approximate return of $110,000. Therefore, the total cost for backbone update could be approximately $124,000. This update of backbone will involve all seven schools plus administrative headquarters. On February 11, we held our monthly finance meeting. All budget items are tracking as expected. We are currently awaiting the state cost share numbers. In order to continue maintaining our expected results, the budget expenses are in a soft freeze at this time. The administration advised the committee of a state grant available for technology improvement, which is in front of the Board of Education this evening, for approval. On February 19, we met with the Bern Wealth Consulting Group. They are our pension consultants. This meeting reviewed the fourth quarter and 2014 yearly results. Our pension fund is currently valued at $11,847,200. Our 2014 rate of return was 7% and met our expectations. Our investment portfolio is rather conservative by design, with the U.S. equity market representing approximately 76% of our total fund. We are focused on long-term liabilities and reducing such expenses. One method is noteworthy, that our pension fund is no longer offered to new hired, non-classified employees as of our last contract. We are still required to maintain our current pension fund until such time that all current qualified personnel receive all of their earned benefits, and thus, we fund our current plan in accordance with sound actuary principles. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Policies and Curriculum Committee, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. PNC met on January 13. At that time, the committee moved two new courses onto the full board. They are up for approval tonight. The first is Programming for Game Design. This course will provide a challenging 21st century experience to students to create and immerse themselves into interactive virtual worlds. Students will experience how to model, texture, light, and animate 3D game engine assets while being exposed to various programming languages. The second course was Pre-Engineering. In this course, students will explore multiple programming languages and their applications, such as Visual Basic and Java. Simple and advanced machines and computer-integrated manufacturing will also be explored. During the January 13 meeting, Mrs. Lyman also presented to the committee an update on the Digital Learning Committee. The work to date completed by the Digital Learning Committee was shared. This work has included identifying expectations for learning to ensure students are prepared for the 21st century. Building off these expectations, the committee has described what this looks like within and beyond the classroom, and how technology can support and advance this work. The work of the committee will conclude with a set of recommendations to direct this work across the district. The recommendations will include implementing the 21st century learner expectations, defining the teacher, defining the teaching expectations to address 21st century skills, providing training to teachers, and providing the technology needed to meet current and future needs. Board members asked questions about current uses of technology and access to reliable devices. That's my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Other committee reports, PTO Council, Jennifer?
I have no report.
Thank you. John, is there a Wellness Committee report?
Really, there's nothing on wellness presently, mainly because we've had so many snow days, and we're going to have to sit back and recalculate based on the meals that we have been unable to serve and how it's going to affect our budget overall. So I believe Keith in the spring should have something on wellness. Next month.
Okay, thank you. Board member comments?
I just had one question. Mr. Baberick, in your presentation, you were, you used the term backbone in terms of talking about technology. Is there any difference between backbone and infrastructure as has been presented?
Same.
Okay.
It's the same, but what happened was somebody started calling it backbone, and then when we started to have backbone infrastructure, everyone thought it was two different things. So we're trying to use both words, and let's agree on one, and we'll use that.
Whichever one you want. I'll make it the official name.
I would just like to remind parents or anyone watching at home that there are still elementary school or elementary parent workshops scheduled, such as in math. There's smarter balanced. Two are escaping me. Say that again? Please.
I forgot my mic wasn't on. Just write instruction to meet the needs of students, math, smarter balanced, and technology.
Thank you. So there are still, I think, at least one of those could be, is still scheduled going forward. You may not be able to go to your own elementary school, but I'm pretty sure you could. If you looked on the Region 15 homepage, at the bottom, there is a link for these workshops, and they are, there are still openings, absolutely. So, because the Board has, had asked Mrs. Lyman and the central office to put together some workshops to help inform parents. That was an outcome of last year, so there was a lot of discussion about all the changes. So these workshops have been going on, and they have really not been that well-attended. So I just want to point out that there are still opportunities for people to go. If they have any questions on these topics, just check out the region's webpage for the If they have any questions on these topics, just check out the region's webpage for the dates and times and locations. Thank you.
Any other comments?
One other comment. I came across a flyer sheet, and I don't know if everybody has seen it or not. This was put out by the Friends of the Pom Rock Music and the Pom Rock Theater Company, and I spotted this in the Middlebury Senior Center, okay? But I really wanted to thank that group for putting out such an interesting flyer sheet and the way it was done. And I don't know if the board members have seen it or not, but it shows all the dates of everything, and I think it was a very nice presentation to show what's going on up here at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, superintendent's report?
The Personnel Report the Board has received.
Comments from citizens? Okay, there being none. We have no old business. Okay, under new business, I need a motion for approval of the new course proposal, Programming for Game Design.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the new course proposal, Programming for Game Design, as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Okay, I need a motion for approval of new course proposal, Pre-Engineering, please.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the new course proposal, Pre-Engineering, as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. I need now an approval for the district technology upgrades to support transition to the new standards grant.
Move that the Board of Education approves the district technology upgrades to support transition to the new standards grant as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Okay, announcement of future meetings. Tuesday, March 3, we will have our first budget workshop at Pom Rock High School, the Media Center, at 7:00 p.m. Thursday, March 5, we will have another budget workshop, same place, the Media Center, at 7:00 o'clock at the high school. On Monday, March 9, Policy and Curriculum Committee will meet at 6:00 o'clock in the Social Media Center, and that same night, we will have our Board of Ed meeting at 7:30 in Room 103. Wednesday, March 11, Finance and Facilities will meet at Central Office at 5:30. Thursday, March 19, is our third budget workshop at the high school, Media Center, at 7:00 p.m. And we will have a Board of Education meeting on the 23rd in the All-Purpose Room at 7:30. I need a motion to go into executive session on an upgrade pending litigation, and I invite Regina Botzford, Keith McLiberty, and Attorney Jared Lukin will be joining us. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move it to executive session?
With no action upon conclusion.
Oh, no action. Okay. Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, unanimous.
Yeah, they said no action.
No action will be taken.
They know they're not the right group.
No. Do I need a motion to? No, you can adjourn, because we're going into executive.